Good evening. It's 6:00 PM on Monday, December 4th, 2023. Welcome to the Series Planning Commission meeting. First thing we'll do is have the clerk call the order.
Yes. Commissioner Del Nero.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jamu. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Otero.
Here.
And Chairperson Katchel.
Here. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone have any conflict of interest on anything tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to Citizens Communication. This is where anyone in the audience has an opportunity to speak to the commission about something which is not on the agenda tonight. While the commission welcomes and encourages participation in planning commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the planning commission and not on the post-agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the post-agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the planning commission. Citizens are entitled to address the planning commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or come up and speak about on the Citizens Communication? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the consent calendar of the agenda. Two items on there tonight. Item one is Clerk's Report of Posting. This was the agenda for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of December 4th, 2023, was posted on December 1st, 2023. An approval of minutes for October 2nd, 2023, Commissioner Otero was absent, so we'll need separate votes on the two items. Get a motion on the report of posting, please.
Motion to approve Board of Posting.
I'll second.
A motion second, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Jamu.
Aye.
Commissioner Otero.
Aye.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. And Chairperson Katchel.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And then the second item, which is the approval of minutes for October 2nd, where Commissioner Otero was absent, we need a motion.
Make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Jamu.
Aye.
And Chairperson Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our public hearings. We have two of them scheduled for tonight. The first of these is actually a two-part application. It includes vesting tentative subdivision map 23-17, which is a proposal to divide an 8.66 acre parcel into five parcels. Parcel one would be 0.81 acres, parcel two 0.95, parcel three 4.79, parcel four 0.94, and the fifth parcel 1.16 acres. The second part of that application is conditional use permit 23-18. This is a proposal to develop parcels one and two in two phases. Phase one consists of a 4,000-square-foot car wash with 18 vacuum stalls to be developed on parcel two. Phase two of the use permit consists of a 4,500-square-foot gas station with convenience store, 16 fuel pumps, and 17 electric vehicle charging stations to be developed on parcel one. Location of that project is 1,200 East Whitmore Avenue, Bryan Rosenberger applicant. Seco status recommending adoption of a negative declaration. Could we have a staff report on this, please?
Us, Eddie Hernandez, will share the staff report.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This presentation is for the Whitmore and Morgan subdivision and development. Application number 23-17 for the subdivision and 23-18 for the conditional use. 23-17 is the vesting tentative subdivision map consisting of subdividing an 8.66 acre into five parcels. Parcel one to contain 0.1 acre, 0.81 acres, parcel two to contain 0.95 acres, parcel three 4.79 acres, parcel four to contain 0.94 acres, parcel five to contain 1.16 acres. 23-18 is conditional use permit to develop parcels one and two in two phases. Phase one will consist of a 4,000-square-foot car wash with 18 vacuum stalls to be developed on parcel one. And phase two consists of a 4,500-square-foot gas station with convenience store, 16 fuel pumps, and 17 electric vehicle charging stations to be developed on parcel two. Parcels three, four, and five will be developed at a later date. Project is located on the east side of Whitmore Avenue, about 500 feet west of Morgan Road. This image shows the aerial vicinity map of the project area. Current zoning of the property is PC 48. The general plan designation of the property is community commercial. And I added this map for the surrounding land uses, so you can see that this is adjacent to the previously approved O'Reilly Auto Parts and the Dutch Bros. There is a vacant area in between the development that it's for office zones. Nothing has been proposed yet. To the north is the G3 warehouse, which is City of Modesto. To the south is low-density residential. The east is the existing Flyers gas station and existing McDonald's. This is the tentative subdivision map. Showing the five parcels. And this is the proposed site plan, the conditional use permit. Going parcel one, which is next to the existing Flyers gas station, is the proposed car wash. Then parcel two is the most west parcel, and it is the proposed gas station with the 16 fuel pumps and the 17 electrical vehicle charging station. There will be a new driveway proposed between parcels one and parcels two. And will, all the parcels will have reciprocal access with each other, including with the existing gas station and McDonald's. And currently, there's no proposed development for the parcel three, four, and five. Additionally, the specific brand of gas station and car wash have not been determined at this time. So, planning staff will review the proposed elevations to confirm consistency with the surrounding area. The top photo shows the property from Whitmore Avenue. The bottom photo shows the property from Morgan Road. Staff recommends the approval for 23-17 vesting tentative subdivision map and approval for 23-18 conditional use permit and to adopt PC resolutions 23-24, 23-25, and 23-26. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I have a question. On the south, you said it was gonna, there's low-density residential. Is there something in here with a wall in that area? I know if you, I don't know if you were here at the time, but we had some, quite a discussion about one on Hatch Road and the new tire place, American Tire, so.
The existing subdivision already has a wall built. We didn't specifically condition one. There is an existing CMU wall dividing the subdivision and the vacant property where the development's going.
How far will this car wash be from that wall? Specifically.
The, the car wash isn't proposed to be adjacent to any of the housing. There's going to be quite a large space between the car wash itself and the closest house.
Okay. Because that's, that's where we ran into some issues with the folks off of Hatch Road. I don't know what the name over here, what the name of the roads, et cetera, would be, but that's what I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? Wait a minute.
For the driveway, it looks like there's only one driveway proposed for both units. Both lots are gonna be sufficient.
There's already two existing driveways off of Whitmore and then another driveway off of Morgan. Right now, an additional driveway is being proposed off of Whitmore. And there's no additional driveways being proposed off of Morgan, just because discussions with the engineering team felt that it would be better to limit the access on there. So, we're only, like, this development's only proposing one new entry.
Just want to make sure there's no issues with the ingress and egress.
So, they'll be using the two existing entrances and the new one as well, so there'll be three off of Whitmore, is that correct?
Yes, there'll be three off of Whitmore and one off of Morgan.
Okay.
Is the third one because Dutch Bros isn't them?
Right, so it will go open through to the open
Gotcha.
vacant land and then to Dutch Bros.
Okay.
Since Earl asked some questions, I'm gonna ask a question too. Reading through this, I'm not a rocket scientist, but I saw there's gonna be a gas station that serves fuel and electrical charging stations.
Correct.
I've never really heard of an intermixed spark scare me around gas. You know, I mean, you got high voltage electricity. I've never seen a combined, you know, fuel and electric.
The new 76 that opened on Hatch. Our EV charging station. Gas station.
Yeah, so the way this is proposed, the, the convenience store itself will be between the fuel pumps and the electric charging station. So, they'll be completely separated. Yes. I noticed, yeah, I know, I have a question too. I noticed the number of parking spaces that are needed for the car wash and the gas stations, so I just had questions about that. Like, for the gas station, there's 27 additional parking spaces that are needed?
I believe, I believe the convenience store is 4,500 square feet and therefore would require approximately 23 parking spaces, and they're, they're providing a little bit more than that.
We're thinking about the space and how much that's gonna take up on top of the 23. And I know there is gonna be a lot of parking spaces going in because of the O'Reilly's as well, so. There's.
We don't currently have a maximum number of parking spaces, but there are other cities that have done that, and that's something that we can evaluate and consider looking at our ordinance, maybe changing our ordinance to have a maximum number of parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who want to come speak, please do so. You state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioner. John Warren, City of Series. I've lived in the community for 37 years. And fumes are the problem with gas stations. Not so much the liquid gas. Fumes are what ignite. And I'm sure going forward with the electrical charging. Fumes don't drift over where the chance of ignition. But the simple answer to this whole situation for US Commissioners to vote no. Series does not need another gas station. Series does not need another car wash. And Series does not need another convenience store adjacent to the gas station. There's one at that location already. You've got a Flyer's gas, convenience store and gas station there. Who's gonna come with their electrical vehicle and use one of those 18 spaces in the middle of nowhere? From what I understand and I hear in the industry, there is financing available out there to build some of these stores and gas stations, if you include electrical vehicle charging stations. So, that's something to look at. I don't know just how valid that information is, but I was told that when the station was being built by the Sequoia Market, which was done recently, and then the gas station that was built by Whitmore and by the old drive-in theater there. And then there's the gas station that was just built on Highway 99. Exit to go to the gas station at the 7-Eleven there on Hatch and Herndon. The future going forward by our local government and the United States and the, and our local governor is to not build gas stations. Electric everything. They're not gonna allow us to buy a gasoline lawn mower. That, we don't need anymore of this type of business. With that, eight acres there need affordable housing, apartments. And along with the apartments, those people should be required to build some electric charging stations, because some of their tenants are probably gonna be owners of electric vehicles going forward. Think about that. As Commissioners, you do not have to approve this just because it's properly zoned and it's all the criteria. Recently, I said in a meeting, and I heard a young lady speak when she was on the planning commission previous to some of you votes, about car washes and voting no in approving ones that were brought to the commission. You don't have to vote yes on this. That property is better suited for housing, because that's what's around it. All you have around there is housing. There are the two new convenience stores out there by, by Morgan. Those are needed, the that you guys just auto parts store. But behind all of that tucked in, that little square area there of eight acres, we need some affordable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Do we have anyone on Zoom? The applicant available?
You're no longer having Zoom comments.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected. So, I guess if no one else wants to speak, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
So, staff's recommendation on this project?
Staff recommends approval based on the, the initial study that we did and the findings that we found and the, the zone that it's in. It requires a conditional use permit. We have drafted conditions of approval that suit this project similarly to previous similar projects that were approved.
And just from the back thought is
the remainder of the site would remain as community commercial, general plan designation, that's what it currently is. They're not, they're not asking for a rezone, and they're not asking to change the general plan. It's already, it's already set up for community commercial. And if, if you'd like to ask that, I believe the applicant is here, you could ask them about their future plans for those other three parcels.
Everyone, my name is Ajmir, and I'm the property owner. So, the future plans for the remaining three parcel, we are trying to bring a grocery store to the bigger parcel. And then the other two parcel, we are trying to bring a QSR or a sit-in restaurant or maybe retail.
Thank you. Any other comments? My only comment referred to the, about the need for additional housing in Series, that's no question about that. We're in the process of doing the housing element right now. But we also have to remember that this parcel is designated commercial by the City of Series general plan, which we adopted, what's about four years ago now? Something like that, four or five years. Seems like it was just yesterday, but it's been a few years. And this is, the commercial designation was put out here to serve the west side of, of our community. And we are beginning to see some commercial uses going in on the west side of Series, which I, I find encouraging. Yeah, we had, there's been discussion at the commission in the past about the number of car washes. I guess we have a lot of really dirty cars here in Series, I don't know. But this would be the first one on that side of the community that I'm aware of, which I think is, speaks well to that community and the growth of Series. So, I think we're also, we have to consider the general plan when we're looking at the overall picture here. We're not here to consider the ramification or the justifications or the to balance residential versus commercial. That decision was made by the general plan a few years ago, and that's, plan is still in effect, is in effect for years to come. And this applicant is making an application consistent with that general plan and consistent with the zoning out there. So, with that, I can't see anything which would allow me, anyway, to vote against the project. To approve a use permit, there are certain findings that have to be made by ordinance. And those findings don't really get into whether we like it or not, in, in a broader sense, they get into specifics of a given project and its impact in the area. And I don't see anything about this project which would be detrimental. In fact, I think it would behoove the area, particularly the west side of Series, to get more growth and development. The very statement that they're looking for a grocery store in that bigger parcel is very encouraging to me. That would be a wonderful addition, I, I think. And I wish them luck with that, but that's, those are my opinions. But with that, anybody's got anything else, please state it or make a motion or whatever you want to do.
I 100% agree that, especially looking at parcel three, four, and five, restaurants and grocery store on that side would be.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. There's, the plan already is specific for this commercial zone. But I also think that Series does have a lot of gas stations right now. I don't know how much more space we, we'll have for more. But is there a chance that we could consider for the future to amend the zoning code so we can prohibit additional gas stations until we build out new subdivisions or new areas in Series?
It's probably a policy decision which would require some sort of direction or leadership from the city council, I think. I'm not sure we can do that on our own here at this point in time.
Chairperson Katchel, if you'd like, if there's consensus with this planning commission that you'd like staff to pursue this, then we can definitely have a conversation with the city council and, and see see if that's something we would do.
Yeah, I don't know if there's or not. At this point, we need to take action on what's before us tonight.
I, I motion to approve Resolution 23-24, 23-17, and 25.
Motion for approval, do we have a second?
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Lee, Commissioner Jamu.
Aye.
And Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Otero.
Aye.
And Chairperson Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Onto our next item, which is item four on our agenda. I'm gonna get my glasses on so I can read it. Additional use permit 23-23 proposed, considered amendment to El Ramito Flea Market's conditional use permit or previously approved conditional use permit, which was 13-12, as amended, Nelson Gomez applicant. I believe the only thing before us tonight is to continue this. There's no real full staff report or set of conditions, so could we get the report as, as it stands?
Yes. As written, or I could, I have a brief statement to read.
Whatever you want to say.
Sure. This will be short. The planning commission approved an extension on October 2nd, 2023, to provide the applicant additional time to prepare site plans and submit to the city for review. These site, these additional site plans were submitted to the city on October 23rd, 2023. On review, staff had comments and questions pertaining to the site, plans, and project description. Throughout October and November, multiple iterations of these documents were discussed between the applicant and staff. There remain a few items discussion between staff and the applicant to finalize the plans and ensure compatibility with the Series municipal code. The applicant and staff jointly request that planning commission extend the use permit expiration and continue this item to the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on February 5th, 2024.
Thank you. The discussion at this point. That will open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak on what was just presented? Gomez.
Good evening. Home has said, we've been in lots of discussions since the last meeting that we had here in October. In comments from TID, comments from fire department, comments from city staff. Discussing all these things, there's a lot of moving parts in this application. So, I think that we have submitted all the information requested from us in kind of fashion. However, sometimes the wheels of parts don't move as fast as perhaps we want them to, so therefore, we need a little bit more time, especially with the holidays coming up. But I think that, I would say that 95% of the items that we have been discussing were agreement. Understanding is that the primary reason situation is that the city council is going to amend to what it would be paid by my clients or from each of the vendors to the City of Series, which would be increased over the current amount. Client has agreed to that. Therefore, that has to go to the city council. Council has that particular fee increase. Council won't be at this ready until January. So, therefore, we need to have this after that, that action by the city council has conducted. And so, that's the reason why not because anyone's dragging their feet. Everyone is collaborating expeditiously to try to get this concluded. Could ask if you could help us and give us a couple more months, we hope to be able to address all the issues on the second, excuse me, February the 5th, and hopefully that time and hopefully. If there's any other question.
I guess not. Thank you, Mr. Gomez, very much. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for an action. The suggestion from the staff is that the piece of matter be continued for essentially two months to, was it February the 5th? Or we, we need a motion to do that?
Make that motion.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 23-27 to extend and continue 13-12 cup to February 5th.
Motion second, recall the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Jamu.
Aye.
Commissioner Otero.
Aye.
And Chairperson Katchel.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
See you in February. Next on the agenda, new business. We have none. Next on the agenda, new business. We have none listed. Public meetings, nothing listed there. Unfinished business, nothing. Matters initiated by planning commission and staff. Did you wanna talk a little bit more, Commissioner Otero, about your suggestion to the the council? Is that something we could talk about?
Um, so, um, about the, the gas stations, the additional ones, um, I think right now we have quite a bit in our city. And so I know that there's other cities in the state who have kinda put a, maybe like a halt on building additional ones or new ones. Um, and I don't know the reasons behind theirs, but I don't know if there's a way for us to kinda put something in place where we don't keep building more on vacant property when maybe we could amend that zoning code to be something else like apartments or something else that's needed from our, for our residents.
Chairperson Ketchell, if I may. So, so this item's not on the agenda, so we can't deliberate on it, but um, and this is something new. Um, if the commission wills it, then I can present this idea to the city council and then have them decide whether or not to pursue this further.
I don't think we could do a, a blanket, right? Because I think you still gotta look at the future housing, so it has to be maybe kind of residents in a certain area or something like that.
Something that we would like, as, as our staff has indicated, is something we would like them to pursue at the city council level?
Especially when we see we're gonna build more housing over there, but they were centrally hized, right? So if they're starting to build that way, they're certainly will need gas stations or shopping centers or something.
Yeah, and I think, so I think we have to be careful, you know, obviously of how it's worded. Um, because we're not trying to put like a complete stop to it, but as we develop more and as we grow out into certain areas, I agree, we will need, you know, more gas stations, car washes, things like that, but just in the current existing areas where we just, you know, build a new gas station and then another one comes in down the road. But if we get another request for a vacant area near near another brand new gas station, so.
I would come it up, I believe, about quarter of Hatch. Last year, we booked it okay. But I, a gas station on that corner, so how was that gonna affect that?
That one has already been approved.
That's, we're done. That's good.
There he is.
Death. You have any thoughts, Gary?
I do not.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I don't really have much one way or another. I, I uh, beyond my expertise, it's me, I like more as it's a market-driven request to develop commercial in a commercial zone. And if the market says another car wash and another gas station is what the market can support, I, I'm not in a position to evaluate that or even feel that we have the tools to evaluate that or the findings or the ability to evaluate. I don't really know.
Looking at it on this side of the highway, I think it's.
But I guess what we would be Commissioner Otero, I think is suggesting is some way to have some sort of say and to is enough enough. I don't know if we have those, we don't have that mechanism, I don't think now. That's not my, at least my interpretation, the way the codes work. That's something we would like staff to discuss with the city council. Anyone object to that? I guess we don't object if you wanna talk to the city council about that.
Well, we'll prepare something. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, reports, commission. Any commissioners or anything to report?
No. No, but I, but I know, understanding where, you know, we're talking from of, you don't have, have to approve it, but when a certain person buys land with the statement that they are allowed to build within any of this, when rejected, hurts, but works. If we go ahead and start proposing ahead of time, so that person is aware of what land they're buying, then I say it's fine to say no.
We're just talking. Any other commissioners?
Yeah. Let's, let's talk after.
Any other commissioners? Chairperson would like to report that we uh, or the commissioners uh, participated in the parade the other night on the uh, trolley. I didn't know what the trolley was. It turns out it was a genuine San Francisco trolley built in, what'd they say?
Nineteen oh seven?
Nineteen oh seven.
The earthquake.
The year after the earthquake and has been converted and put on wheels and uh, one of our uh, citizens who's very active in community events owns it, I guess, and uh, towed it behind his truck and uh, got a big, big crowd on there, including apparently all his grandkids, which filled up the entire center section of the thing, which is he dressed his grandkids, so that, that was fun. Great turnout, a huge turnout for the parade, which I thought was terrific to see the, the streets were I, I was shocked to see how many people were out there. It's really wonderful to see. So anyway, that's all I have to report on. City attorney, have anything to report? Guess not. Anybody from city staff have anything you'd like to add tonight?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Your park's coming along nice. Yeah, I know, I walk by it a lot, it's coming along nicely. Um, so with that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be held Wednesday, January the third, twenty twenty-four. So another year of the commission is in the books. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.